They will read the, I'm assuming that they will read the explanation is the way I was told.
No PowerPoint?
No, no PowerPoints. I asked about that. None of our slides or anybody's slides are going to be shown. There's going to be no other presenters per se, other than the Board of Selectmen reading the explanations for the articles and staff responding to any questions that come up. It's more of an information gathering thing and exchange as well as identifying, you know, some issues that we might need to have answers for at town meeting.
I think it's a good idea.
On a true town meeting feeling though, they should have it over at the school. Get everybody in there, you know, a little echo chamber going, bouncing off the chairs.
Something about the lights in that room that always make me sleepy. I don't know why. They're like extra dim.
And the chairs wake you up. Alright, okay, not going to sleep here, not going to sleep here. Are they going to take the warrant in order?
I would assume so, yes.
Well, it'd probably be a good thing to watch on TV. If you've got any questions, tune in, tune out when a various report comes up. I think golf is supposed to be at the end. I was told the other day when I went up to see the golf administrator. So I think everybody's going to be there at the hearing room for a long time. Go.
I don't know whether at some point they'll just move on to the next article, just understanding that some articles may be more solicit more comments than others.
Planning Board articles. Is there anything there you want to discuss on the?
Yep.
Okay.
I included the explanations. The only changes that were made were exceedingly small ones to yours, Tom, to reflect the comments that Joanne made with regard to the frequently asked questions. At one point, we had said more liberal by law, and we changed that to less restrictive in the frequently asked question, so it's got changed here. And then Joanne had mentioned about adding the hack brochure on high cost of living in the frequently asked question, so I just added that to the slides of the other things that the town plan, the planning board reviewed.
Understood, yeah.
So, just so you're clear, those are just two minor changes that were made. Just to kind of give the board a little bit of an update, I've heard a lot of conversations from a wide variety of people that there might be some amendments at town meeting floor. I know Susan might be interested in having one, but I also know, yes, other people who want to have articles that would make it much, or not articles, but amendments that would make it far less restrictive than what we have now. Whether something is deemed within scope is made, that determination is made by the moderator, who may or may not ask input from town council. This is information I received when speaking with town council. So I kind of picked his brain a little bit about what things he might consider to be in scope and out of scope, but really it's up to the moderator to make that determination. I'm going to try and meet with the moderator prior to town meeting to get some input from him on to whether he would think certain things would be in scope or out of scope. It'd also be very interesting to see what happens at the mock town meeting, what kind of questions and concerns that get identified during then. But I think we do have one meeting before town meeting on May 1st, and we might want to talk about considering whether the planning board would like to withdraw the amendment, either initially or at some point during, during the evening, depending on what type of amendments are being proposed. I think it's always better to have no bylaw change than to have a bad bylaw change that we then have to live with for a long time.
Or it gets bounced by the AE because it's not properly written.
Right.
Comes back in August.
Right.
Well, I have to report that at the, at the Housing Committee, one of the members of the Housing Committee was not too happy with the 10,000, 10,000-foot change on the lot size, 10 to 15,000. She said that there was a, she canvassed her neighborhood, and they were thinking of the possibility of offering an amendment at town meeting. I tried to describe to her the things that we've gone through here, and she said she was going to possibly talk with you, Kathy, for any more information. So I just wanted the rest of the board to know that there are still some issues out there that people are talking about.
I think, I think one of the more important aspects, and I hope this pre-meeting can help. I attended a zoning board of appeals meeting, maybe it was the last one, or two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and there was an ADU request on it, and I went just to see what that whole process was like. And I so appreciated, one question that you had, Susan, that I thought was most telling, and I hope links up to this pre-meeting, is your question relating to whether or not the, the couple that had been presenting this plan had ever directed their architect as to what the proper size of this unit would be, and therefore to design it around that size.
To make it proportional, you mean?
To make it to 800 square feet.
To conform with the regulations.
800 square feet.
Oh, bigger than that.
Yeah, a lot bigger. And it came back, if I recall correctly, that the couple had never directed their architect, and they had plans, and they had drawings, and they had, from my view in the audience, invested quite a bit of energy and money into a plan for an in-law apartment that on paper looked great. It was 1,050 square feet. That's the size of my house. And the house that they live in is, I believe, 2,500 square feet. So it was 50, almost, almost 40% of the size of their house, which would have met the 50% test. But the fact that they had no communication, or didn't know, or said they didn't know, was a bit surprising to me that they had moved all the way down this road of developing what appeared to be a really, really nice improvement to their property, and to, they walked away very disappointed.
The architect didn't look at the bylaws.
That's what I was going to say.
But the most telling question, again, I think in the end, came, what did, what did you advise your architect to do? And, and there were other, some, you know, there were some other really good questions, but it was a very, it was a very telling, it was a very telling zoning board of appeals meeting, for me. So if that's just one example, I can imagine that there are many others if we were to look back on those kinds of proposals.
Well, the zoning board is in the rules and regs for decades, just for that very reason.
Yeah, they, they certainly supported us wholeheartedly that evening, loud and clear.
So you'll get back to us with any information, and we'll talk about it on May 1st?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of let you know, I think we will be having a meeting on May 1st, just to kind of, either just for me to relay this to you, and you guys are comfortable moving forward, or to see what the game plan is with regard to.
Well, we think we look at it as a running curve, too, when you look at the five-year shelf life. And that may give some people some concern, but in the long run, I think that we had a lot of discussion. We've changed it several times. And it's just too bad that we, if we get to the point where we have to pull it, it's too bad because of the units that I think might be able to come forward without even us knowing with any history, you know?
I just think that there's people on such different ends of the spectrum on this issue. Usually, people are a little bit closer. I think here, it's really diametrically opposed.
I think that's the issue, too.
Yeah.
Well, if we ever run into Julian Seer and Sarah Peak, and this is coming from a man with a Trump sticker, we can say we did our best. If it passes or doesn't pass, because it started on the Outer Cape, it started in a Cape Cod Young Professionals meeting, it moved its way through the ranks, it got to Beacon Hill, and it came back down the drain to us. And that's how this whole thing came about. And so we shall see. It's always good to let the town of Yarmouth people speak.
It had the best intentions, but what happens is, once you start discussing it, you see some of the drawbacks.
That's true.
Some of the good points, okay. People love the rest. We have another committee assignment for some wonderful planning board member. Who here knows the value of land?
No.
You're on a lot of committees, Tom. You're on at least three that I can think of at the top of my head.
Five.
Basically, what's, what's, I don't know how much of a heavy lift this will actually be for this particular committee. It's not like something that's a regular committee where you'd meet, you know, like every month or every two months. It's going to be a little bit on an as-needed basis. Basically, there might be town-owned land, there might be some individual who wants to purchase it because they live next door, or the town may say, "We don't need that. We're interested in disposing of it," or there may be some foreclosed land that we get through, through different types of tax title things. And so how, this just formalizes a process for how the town would review those types of requests and situations and make recommendations. The first place it would go would be to a staff committee, and they would kind of take a look at it, compile information on the property, which is kind of included in the evaluation form that's included in your packet, in addition to the application that the individual submitted. And then basically submitting it to that land disposition committee to see, you know, do you guys recommend, or would want to recommend to the board of selectmen that they move forward with disposition of this property. The decision's totally up to the board of selectmen, have to go through town meeting. I think there's some, certain types of land that don't need, tax title properties obtained through foreclosure may not need town meeting, but all other disposition of land needs to go through town meeting. And then there's usually some type of RFP process that needs to go out, so that's a fair bidding process for, for people for disposition of the land. So we, apparently, there's going to be a seven-member board, and they have in their charge, which is also included in your packet, given six of those spaces to people on existing committees, one of them being the planning board, the others being open space, recreation, conservation, affordable housing trust, and the finance committee, and then there's one at-large member. So I have been asked to see who on the planning board would like to partake of this committee, and then you guys could hopefully vote on a nomination that I could then provide to the town administrator's office.
This is all town-owned land?
Yes.
I would think that that would, the first step would be directing it to community housing, to see the availability of creating affordable housing.
And I think that's why the Affordable Housing Trust, you'll get there from the Affordable Housing, yeah, of possibility. And that's one of the other things, is looking at what's the land used for now, and what could it possibly be used for. Maybe the town wants to keep it, you know, or maybe the town, maybe the property that was foreclosed and it has somewhat of a dilapidated structure on it. Maybe the trust wants to purchase it, you know, repair it, and then make it an affordable unit. So there's a lot of different options and things to take into consideration. A lot of the town-owned land does have a wide variety of restrictions on them, so I'm not really sure how many parcels of property are out there that could actually be disposed of.
There's nobody on the wastewater committee on that. That's a shame. I'm only bringing that up because there's a piece of land behind the pancake man that used to have the old water tower on it.
Oh, yeah.
And Mr. Farley is a client. He's tried to come to the town a few times and buy that, and the town was close a few times, but then said no, because I think it's going to be a valuable pumping station at some point for the sewer. I'm just surprised there's not a sewer committee person on that, on that committee, because there may be pieces of land that he or she would think would be relevant to the future flow of.
Substations.
Jeff Colby, the DBW director, someone from his department, is part of the staff makeup.
Oh, okay.
So I think, you know, that type of comment would get made from staff. And maybe it's a case, Highway has a comment on it because they want to use it for drainage. They know they have a drainage problem, and then they were sticking in the back of the, you know, when we get some money, you know, we'll put some drainage in over there.
Because I was willing to see if our board would step aside and open it up for the wastewater committee and preserve the town's future.
Nice try.
Thank you, thank you very much. Well, Chris isn't here. What do you think? Is there anybody who is here that would like to sit on this committee? I do not see, in all my years of town, we've rarely had pieces of land come up, maybe three or four, in the 25 years I've been on the planning board that come to town meeting. But would anybody here like to be on this committee?
I do.
Okay. Does anyone else want to put their name into the running?
Me.
We have two people, okay. All right, big tension in the room.
Somebody needs to make a motion, or you can discuss it some further?
I'll discuss it before I make a motion. We'll just go with Joanne's at it first, but go ahead, Bob. Tom, why do you think you'd be better than Joanne, and vice versa, Joanne, why do you think you'd be better than Tom?
That's not the, that's not the right question.
Oh, all right.
That is not the right question.
What do you have to offer the land disposition?
I'm better-looking than he is.
There you go. You have a vote.
What's that?
Lisa, I think so.
There you go.
Well, okay, I'll start it off. As an engineer, I, I look at land for the, for the purposes that, that need to be, need to be built, need to be done, need to be used. And so I, I look at, I look at land as, as a commodity for the, for the community, as something that is valuable, to, to retain what we need for our, our town needs, and to dispose of those things that are superfluous. I've had the experience back in, in the MDC of seeing towns usurp state lands for town purposes, and sometimes those decisions that I've, that I've witnessed have not been, have not been thought out long-term. The short-term benefits to, to a, to a community grabbing land from, from, from state ownership. But if a town has tried to retain other lands of their own, and they usually fight against private attempts to acquire, or even, even the, even the idea of trying to benefit from, from the use of lands for the, private, private use of town properties. So in other words, I've, I've seen a spectrum of the kinds of issues that have already existed in, in management of town, of land resources. And so I think, I think I have something to offer for the, for this, this issue.
Okay, from Ms. Barron and Ms. Crowley.
I think my, my interest in this is, is partly that it's a new policy put together by the board. I recall, I believe it was last town meeting, if not the one before, where the disposition of property became a pretty hot topic on the floor of board meeting, a town meeting, because there was no policy, and the town was looking at the financial implications of disposing of property that is of little value to the town, and looking at that as a, as a revenue source. And I just recall, the whole thing kind of blew up. Never happened. Ed Centio was up there trying to do his best. Now we have a policy that's brand-new, and I think public policy is, is an area of strength I bring from my work when I was at the Port Authority. And I think that I, I especially am liking the opportunity, as minimal as it might be. The other committees that are part of this, and the people who are on those committees, I don't have much interaction with at all, and therefore, I would, I would welcome the opportunity to spend more time with those other volunteers in town, other people who give of their time in those different disciplines. And I think baseline, Tom and I have exactly the same qualities and capabilities to represent the board. There's no, either one of us could represent the board perfectly well on this committee. It's just a matter of personal interest for me. And, 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 and I don't think it's going to be a very, I don't think it would be like my assignment to the Capitol Education, but you never know.
There we go.
I would, I would echo Joanne for that town meeting where things were, were, were being attempted and, and were rejected, mainly because they were, it was, it came as a surprise. There was no, no preliminary discussion. It was something pre, being presented only at town meeting. In other words, a policy like this would be, is, is very helpful and is necessary and needs to be, needs, needs to be used for that kind of disposition, whether it's a different use, or a changed use, or acquisitions, if acquisitions are also being considered. But disposition definitely, in that, in that town meeting, was, was a surprise, and it was no wonder that the, the townspeople rejected it.
I believe this is solely for disposition, not for acquisition.
I think, personally, I think that aspect should be at least kept in, as a, as a fallback, if necessary, acquisition should, should be considered as well.
Well, this is a novel time. Through all the chairmans I've sat through, including being in this seat myself, John Shannon, Steve DeYoung, I can go down, Dr. Morasko, Jim Saban, there has never been two members going for the same position. Usually, one says, "Oh, no, no, you take it." "No, please, I want it." So I'm sort of at a loss. Would you like me to call for, looking at you guys, call, vote all at once, and we have raised one by one, or just person one, person A, person B?
You know what, I'll make it easy. I'll make it easy for you. No, 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 I'll make it really easy for you. Again, my interests were strictly personal. I think, I think Tom.
Well, don't talk yourself out of it.
No, I'm not going to. I'm not going to. But I, I don't think it's necessary. You've got two good candidates here. There's, it's, it, to me, it's going to be a committee that's nice to be on, nice to have other folks who are interested in town affairs. And I didn't know that, Tom and I didn't talk before, and I spoke first. So it, it doesn't, it doesn't matter one way or another. I think Tom should represent us. I'll vote for him, and then there won't be any issue.
Well, before you do that, you've got my vote, only because I think you'd be refreshing. I like the way you could do your, your community involvement with the finance committee, buttress that. And Tom, you've got your, your plate fairly full with the ZBA, but that's my feeling. But if you want, I'll call for a vote, and first, I need a motion to nominate one of them, and a second.
Any comment first, before we get into the motion?
Go ahead.
Sure. I think both candidates are equally suited. The credentials are there, and I feel uncomfortable trying to pick one of them. I would just throw out a suggestion, you know, relative to the amount of committees that Tom is on, relative to Joanne and boards, and the one with the least amount of committees that they've signed up for should take this position. That's just something to think, consider. So whoever has the most committees, it's a burden. I can tell you, assuming five committees, and with the wastewater coming up, we're going to take our tour on the road. It's taking a lot of time.
I forgot about that.
So.
Probably 12 years in Marina Committee.
Yeah, I know it.
Alternatively, we could, we could do a paper ballot, and we could, and we could.
We could, but I'm not going to drag out pen and paper.
Silent vote.
Honestly, I would not, I nominate Tom Barron for this.
You sure?
Yeah, absolutely.
Somebody else can still nominate Joanne. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. A call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Any more discussion?
You want to discuss again?
Yes.
Okay.
How many, how many committees or boards you serve on?
In town, this and Capitol.
Okay, that's two. Tom?
Planning, ZBA, and housing.
So it's, again, it's a pretty well.
Capitol isn't all year round either. Just, it's very intense, though, when you have it.
Well, it's nine months.
It's a good match.
Oh, is it that long? I stand corrected then.
I'm going to restart in September.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I oppose.
Who?
To oppose. Any abstentions? Nope, it carries. Tom, you voting for yourself?
Yeah, you got to vote for yourself.
As you say, it carries without.
Are you, I just need to record it.
I don't know if you need abstaining or you're holding. What are you doing? Because we don't have, right now, we've got.
Two, two.
You need to vote. You need to vote for yourself.
You have to vote for yourself, or you can abstain. Whatever you'd like to do.
There's six people, and you should have a majority, so you need four.
There you go. So four, four to two.
So Brad and Norm.
Yep. Make us proud. There we go. That is a first. That is a first.
Thank you both for volunteering your time.
Thank you for putting your head in the ring. All right, we have minutes of Bobby Orr's birthday, March 20th.
How do you know that?
I'm a date geek and, yeah.
Love that.
Bobby Orr's birthday, there we go. Do we have a quorum here for that? We do. Good.
Will we accept the minutes of March 20th, 2019?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Calling for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstained?
Abstained.
There we go. Speaking of members of the board, have you heard from Chris in a while? Anything, an email?
Okay.
He's still on tap for, for.
You know what, if I call him, he always shows up. So I will try to call him.
For May 1st, at least?
Yeah.
Do you want me to email?
I don't think it's email that helps. It's the phone call that gets him. Even like design review, when I need the quorum, he's always there if I call.
Do you want me to call him, or do you want to call him?
I'll call him.
Okay, I just want to remind him, because I'd like to, he's always a very sharp man. I'd like to have his input. Board of Agenda of Appeal and Decisions, we've got that.
Yep.
Committee updates. You guys should be full of updates going into town meeting.
Drive-In Site Utilization Committee, we had a meeting last week, and we went over to the interim youth policy, made some changes. That's going to be presented to the selectmen in the near future.
Probably after town meeting, yeah.
After town meeting.
And we also are looking at ways to encourage people to name the park that we're building. So we're going to have a naming contest. Kathy, you can elaborate on that.
Yeah, we're going to.
That would take in time.
Yeah, we're going to do a survey monkey and kind of get all that information out to the community, but we are looking for having a drive-in site naming challenge, you know, to come up with some different ideas that people might have. One thing that the committee did specify is that it not be named, suggestions include a name of an individual person or family. I think the idea is to be more of a community-related park, and then they'll take all those names, all the way, I think we're going to go all the way through like August 30th. We're going to give a lot of time. We're just running it by the town administrator's office now to make sure they notify the board of selectmen so they're not taken by surprise, although they are on board with renaming. And then we'll make suggests, the drive-in site will make suggestions to the board of selectmen, who will ultimately decide to pick one, or none of them, or go a whole other way or something. But I think it could be really kind of, you know, a nice community project and kind of.
Get people interested.
Yeah, some good civic pride, coming up with a good name. I can't think of one off the top of my head, and it bothers me. I'm going to have to put some thought into it.
Anything else on all your committees?
Nope, nothing really.
Okay, that's a good. Lee, anything for us? Put the mic down, Bob. Mic, bring your mic down.
Your mic.
We're just having, our next meeting is on the 22nd. We're meeting at 3:30 in the afternoon instead of the evening because of the demand for space that's not necessarily available in Town Hall.
What's the meeting?
It's Water Resources.
So you're expecting a few people, is?
No, it's, it's our regular monthly meeting right now. We're just organizing and, in some cases, making presentations to organizations in the town. And we're still working on finalizing some information that we're going to be putting together as part of the program.
Can you talk, you and Tom, when I came in, we're talking a little bit about the emails and the, the weekly letters, or is there some updates that are going out? and the weekly letters, or is there some updates that are going out to various people on the wastewater project?
Yes.
And how can we get in on that list?
Well, if you-
What's the best way to do that?
If you go to the website, you can do-
The town website?
Town website.
Yeah, okay.
And there's a Water Resources section there.
Yep.
And there's a hashtag that you can put in, you can apply, and automatically get updates on emails and things that are coming out periodically.
Okay, great.
So if you log into that, you'll get everything.
Okay, great. I have no report.
Wow. Mr. B., I'm just going to follow up what Lee said. I've been receiving the newsletter that the Water Resources Committee has been sending out, and it's about, I'd say about bi-weekly. And I hope that it is getting out to more than just a few select people in the town, that it's much more widely distributed for a lot of folks, because it's very good information. And the more that positive outreach for information for the residents, that will spell success when the actual votes have to be there to push the project.
I believe hard copies are available on the table upstairs here at town hall. So if people happen to be in town hall getting stickers or whatnot, or dog licenses, they can certainly pick up some information there, too. But that's a, I'm sure that, that's been thought of, but it's a good point.
Yeah. And for my committee on housing, they, the Housing Committee is largely waiting on the ADU article in the, for town meeting. That is consuming their main interest right now. So we're, as I said, I've said earlier that there are some folks that are still questioning how that has been drawn up. But that's where the majority of emphasis has been.
Thirty years later, all this excitement about a new bylaw. Correspondence, did we miss anything from Kyle or you?
No, I think Kyle's just been sending some stuff out, and I've been forwarding stuff as it comes in.
Okay. Staff updates?
We have some staff updates. We had our municipal vulnerability preparedness workshop. Tom Barron was kind enough to come to the meeting on March 22nd. All that information was kind of, it was a very interesting process to look at different types of natural hazards and climate-related hazards and things that we can do to help mitigate those, and projects that we might want to implement in order to have more resiliency in town to climate-related hazards. Woods Hole Group was our facilitator, and they have compiled a draft report. I had a few comments on it. I'm hoping to have it up on the website, the Bractomy and on the website by Friday. And basically, we are going to be also advertising a public listening session, which will talk about the results from the workshop, in addition to the draft report, and also soliciting some other type of ideas that people might have on this issue. It's scheduled for April 30th at 6:00 PM in the town hall hearing room here. Just wanted to get that word out.
Who's running that meeting?
Town staff with the help from Woods Hole Group. We have a core group of town staff. One of the things with the grant that we got from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs is that 120 to 200 hours of staff time are required as part of the grant. And a lot of it was just like advertising, getting the invite list together, putting people in groups, you know, just a whole lot of coordination, whereas Woods Hole Group really did the technical aspect of it and compiled the information from the meeting.
What time was that again, on the 30th?
It's at 6:00 PM. I'm going to be sending out a bunch of different, I have a little flyer, and we're sending out information, and we'll also send it out to the board in general so everyone can come. I think all of you were invited, so I have the list of everyone who was invited, and then we'll do our standard publicity to get people to come.
I thought it was a very good opportunity for other folks in town to get involved in that, in the idea of identifying potential hazards for the future. But I think, while it was a good turnout, we had three, essentially three round tables. I think that we, the majority of the tables were populated by staffers. There weren't that many just citizens. So I mean, it's like the expression, teaching, talking to the choir. The majority of us were choir members because we're part of different committees, et cetera. But I think that a little more citizen participation on that would have probably been helpful. Now, it was up to Woods Hole Group to determine how they, what their logistics, how they wanted to manage the logistics. But I think the idea of opening it up to non-committee-
It wasn't just committee members. There was 54 individuals that were actually formally received the invitation, and it's based on the protocol from that workshop guide. And you wanted a bunch of people from a lot of different aspects, a lot of different expertise, maybe people who work for preservation groups, or maybe people who work for the state, or maybe people who work, you know, in local government. We actually, getting people to come for an eight-hour workshop, I think we did pretty darn good. And people were very engaged. Joe Family from Woods Hole Group complimented the engagement and the participation and a lot of great, there was much more dynamic interactions and exchange of information than he's seen at some of his other workshops. So I think it was a success, but I do think they realized that not everyone can commit the eight hours, but maybe they can come for a two-hour, hour and a half public listening session and be able to offer some input then. And so that's why part of the program is to have this listening session and open it up to the broader public for their input and to solicit, you know, any new ideas that someone might also have. Part of the report, the final report, will include the comments received from the listening session. So that will end up in the report as well.
Yeah, thank you.
And anything else under staff updates?
I do have another thing. One of the other things that we're taking a look at is potential corridor improvements along Route 6A from like Willow Street to Union Street. The water main from Barnstable Town Line to Union Street needs to be replaced. So as part of that process, we started to also take a look at whether any type of streetscape improvements might be a good idea. We, I don't know if many of you may have recalled and have participated in the Cape Cod Commission's Route 6A corridor streetscape study that was done in 2017, where a bunch of different ideas were pushed back and forth, and generally some recommendations were made. The town has hired VHB, a consulting engineering firm, in order to come up with basically visualizations of some of those recommendations, so people can kind of see what are some of the things that, what would it actually look like to incorporate some of these things along different sections of Route 6A. So we are going to, they're working on that right now, and they're finishing it up, and we are having three public input meetings in May. They're the same presentation, they're just being held at three different dates and times to try and maximize participation. And again, this is something I'm going to get out on the website, and there'll be a whole invitation list of people on 6A, as well as press releases, et cetera, et cetera. But May 9th at 10:00 AM at the First Congregational Church in Yarmouth Port, May 15th, which is a standard planning board meeting, at 6:00 PM here in the town hall hearing room. If for some reason we have to have a planning board meeting that night, we'll have it a little bit earlier, hopefully, if we have an A and R or something. Other than that, there's nothing that needs to go before the board on that date. But we do have, it's nice to have it at town hall because then it can be recorded and shown on Channel 18 to other people who might not be able to have come to the meeting. And then the last one is May 22nd at 2:00 PM, also at the First Congregational Church. I believe that's where Precinct 1 votes, so people should be familiar with it. So a lot of these ideas are going to be shown visually, a lot of interesting ideas from what I've seen from VHB. I haven't seen all the information yet. So definitely public input's important to, any proposed improvements to be considered for that corridor.
Is it Union to Summer or Union to Willow?
It's Union to Willow is basically where the streetscape improvements are. The water main project goes all the way to Barnstable. Another part of this same project had to do with the Center Street traffic study, which is much further along. But it's not going to be part of, that's had separate public meetings, it's not going to be part of the Route 6A.
You said it goes all the way to Barnstable. Is this a mutual aid connection with Barnstable?
Oh, for the water main? No, I think it's-
Just that the project is from the town line?
That's the way it's phrased. I don't know whether there's an actual interconnection there or not, Tom, with the water system.
Yeah, because one of the items that has been talked about for water has been the people that are in the Comacuit section that are being served by the Barnstable Water System, the north side, which is, and they're being charged at entirely different rates than the Yarmouth Water. And I know, one of the things that Jeff Colby mentioned at selectman meeting was that they are looking at the issue of making a connection for those, there's about 35, 36 house lots that would be potentially served by the Yarmouth Water System rather than receiving water from the Barnstable. And Barnstable has four different water districts, and so this is one up on the north that is separate from the Hyannis system.
These meetings won't really talk about the water main at all. That's going to be something the DPW, so Jeff probably knows a lot more about that. But this is really just potential streetscape improvements to kind of address some of the concerns that were identified by some of the residents up there, having to do with safety, maintenance, you know, the aesthetics, and that type of thing.
Any updates on the Bass River Bridge?
I do not. They keep saying spring. I'm not sure what they consider spring.
They've got jackhammers. They've got jackhammers. They're working on both sides. They're down to one lane for crossing. So is this the preliminary work, or are they actually starting to?
No, that's just repair work. That's not the project, no.
Well, I'll tell you, it looks like a lot of activity, a lot of machines.
Repairing it before they take it down. It's very clever. It's, who uses it?
Well, I think it's going to take a little, I think they need to get it to a certain level to maintain it.
Yeah.
More of a maintenance type thing. But I can check in on that. I remember the last time we had talked about it.
Lot of activity.
They said spring, that they would have some ideas with that, the bridge study. So I'll check in on that.
Parker River still on for the fall?
That's our hope. That's our hope. They submitted third highway and fourth structural submittal on Monday. Mast D O T is really working hard to try and review it quickly so that we can move forward with that project.
75% maybe.
I'd like to think it's 99%.
Making most do adjourn?
Some move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Here we go. A good years ago, whoever you had-